Open session, and at this time I'd ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I have unfortunately a long list of names to mention, residents who have passed, and some people, one person known on the national level, local residents that have passed away, Wilfred Pierce, Robert F. Rose, Paul Ferreira, Thomas Clifford Senior, Lois Muncell, Robert Ridley. I should also like to mention the passing of Senator John McCain. Gentlemen who spent too long in a North Vietnam prison camp, who came home and could no longer serve in the Navy but turned to public service. Senator McCain was an outstanding individual, a national hero. He never stopped serving his country and was really a remarkable individual. I would also like to mention that yesterday was the 17th anniversary of 9/11. And at this time I'd ask for a moment of silence in memory of all those whose names I mentioned, and also all of those who were killed in the attacks on 9/11, and those who have since passed on because of the actions that took place that day and ensuing illness in fighting fires and the public safety, people that survived the initial incidents but have since passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd ask for our public, if anybody has any public input this evening. Mr. Higgins, you're just in time for public input.
I'd like to say hi.
Hi. Okay. So, and we will do public input as we always do towards the end of the meeting one more time. And at this time, I'm going to yield the floor to Madam Administrator for the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you. Good evening. So, there was an article in the Taunton Gazette about the energy aggregation, which is of course our purchasing of electricity as a town, not the municipal operations town, but literally the town of Dayton. And by doing so, we went out to bid to the market and got a lower price. There was some litigation about that cost, and the consortium of 23 towns did settle with Public Power. So, the original price per kilowatt was .1012 cents, and it's going up to .1043. This added cost is still the lowest price based upon that whole bid. So, you still have the lowest bidder even though that it is going up. This board did vote to accept the settlement. You will be receiving, if you're part of this program, you will be receiving a mailing detailing everything. The Taunton Gazette article is pretty good. If you'd like a copy, I can send it to you. But it just is an increase in their costs. They weren't able to actually take care of what they were promising essentially without the risk of going bankrupt. So, they underbid, they bid a little bit too low, but we did reach this settlement. It's an agreed-upon figure that is still the lowest bid, lower than the second lowest bidder, and Public Power thinks that they can do what they need to do to get through and keep providing our power.
So, folks are still saving, but they're just saving less than the original promised price?
Exactly. And it would still be, if they came in at this amount, they would still be, Public Power would still have been the chosen provider. So, but your bills will go up slightly, and again, you'll get a mailing detailing all of this, but the Taunton Gazette, they did do a good job talking about what was going on there. And you're not alone. It's 23 towns, 23 communities. Okay. So, I am actually excited about this. I was able to put together the evaluation, the proposed evaluation policy and procedures with the proposed plan, Nancy and I, thank you Selectman Goulart, got together talking about what we wanted in our, bless you, talking about what we wanted in our evaluation. We looked at evaluations and processes from Rehoboth, Somerset, Westport.
UMass.
And UMass, thank you. And this is a presentation of a kind of a mix of all of those. Selectman Goulart and I agreed that a score of five potential categories versus three was a little bit more fair, a little bit more what we were looking to do. And this breaks down a policy to, for you to rank and evaluate your department heads and non-elected officials and non-union personnel. If this were to be introduced to the unions, just so everyone's aware, that would be at the bargaining table, and we're not throwing this at anybody.
Of course.
This is a promise that the Selectmen made to the Finance Committee over the last budget season that they would establish this process.
Promises made, promises kept.
That's right.
I guess my first question, so I have one procedural question and one content question. I guess I'll start with the content question. First, I just wanted to say, I think that it's really good. It's really thorough. It's a lot more organized and more concise than perhaps the ones we used as a model for this. Is there a, I didn't see in here a self-evaluation component, is there?
Yes, there is a self-evaluation. So, when I was putting this together, and that's something that Selectman Goulart said was very important, and she'd never seen an evaluation process that didn't have a self-evaluation component. So, if you go through the process part of this policy, and I know it's long-winded, so I don't really blame anybody for not being an expert on it, but you, the employee would conduct a self-evaluation and then hand it to whoever the evaluator would be. And then together, both the evaluations, the evaluators and the evaluates, for lack of a better word, those compile together to be the evaluation. And if there was a written response made by the person being evaluated, that is also put together as the evaluation document, and all of that together would go to the personnel file, so that's okay.
Is the self-evaluation using this form as well?
Yes. I thought about having a separate one, and I said, "Well, how would you compare the metrics?" Because you're voting on, or you're evaluating on two different things. So, I thought we could iron out wrinkles, but I think it would be wise to keep the same metric.
And it says mid-year review. This is also the same sheet for a, like, performance review for the full year as well.
Well, that's up to you. I didn't create a mid-year review form. If you'd like me to, I can.
And it's optional, the mid-year. We don't have to do the mid-year. Is that...
Correct. In this, in this policy, I made it optional. However, that does not mean you save up all the, "You did this wrong, you did this wrong, you did this wrong, you did this wrong," to the, I mean, it really, and it's, that's detailed too, because it's not fair for someone being evaluated to go along life thinking everything's fine, and then all of a sudden, you know, what do you mean?
Yeah, I had mentioned that before, that this form is, with the exception of some of the town stuff in here, this very much follows what we had to do at UMass, and we did have two a year. And so, for the, for the year-end one, after you get through that, you already are preparing for the ensuing year, because you have to state what you intend to accomplish, what your goals are. So then, when mid-year comes, that's one of those things you talk about. And if, in the meantime, your goals have been, what you want to accomplish have been approved upfront, and something comes along, and it's like, "Oh, you aren't going to have time to do this one, because I need you to take this one," then, in effect, one gets put on hold and you move the next one in for the last six months, you know, as a circumstance arises that you have to deal with. So, by doing mid-year, you also have, if you have to change course in the middle of the year because something happened, and I can think Y-2K planning was the big bugaboo that we got hit with in 1999, because the Board of Trustees said that the Internal Audit Department had to be totally responsible for assuring the university would be Y-2K compliant everywhere. So, needless to say, most of the goals that we had set initially, they were out the window because we had to devote so much time to Y-2K. But, but as we said, it's like a progress report too. By the same token, if the person being evaluated says, "You know what? That was what my goal was, but you know, as I work through this, this is really something I think should be put on hold, because I would like to bring in this one now, because I think I should do this one before I go to that one." And sometimes you have to work through these things to find out those things. But this, what I'm hoping is that the board will be able to look at this and go through it, and see if there's any places that you want more information or any changes you want made, and then we'll bring it back at a future meeting and discuss whatever changes, and then, you know, approve it as the document.
I already went...
At least for the next, for the next year.
I already went through it.
I also went through it myself.
I didn't really have any changes. I just had a question about the self-evaluation, and then I guess I had a logistical question. Do we need to vote to approve the form and approve the policy? Well, first of all, with the policy, we're reading them three times, so, you know.
Right.
We should probably try to start that as...
We're going to stick with our policy of reading the policies.
Correct. But I guess my question is, do we have to separately vote to approve the form and then the policy, or by virtue of starting to read the policy for the first time tonight, that would approve the form?
The form is technically part of the policy.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Because we reference the form in the policy.
Sure.
So, it's all one document.
Okay. Do we want to do the first reading tonight? And if anybody has, through the next three weeks, has an issue, we can address it at, like, the next meeting. And remember, we have two meetings a month now, so this is really going to bring us into almost...
October 3rd, you'll be doing, if all goes well, your final reading, and then it will be adopted.
Oh, my God, this is the first September meeting. Okay, I apologize.
It's all a blame.
Okay. So, who would like to...
Just a little bit more clarification on the six-month review. It's my position that it's only if the evaluator or the evaluator has concerns that they have to do the six months.
That's how it's written here.
Right. So, I don't want, I don't see it as every six months we're doing an evaluation on...
Well, in that, my, I wrote it that way, because my concern is, life happens, and I know how busy we all are on a regular basis, and if it's like, "Oh, I gotta do that six month review," I just can, I can feel it, that I'll be like, "Ugh, I gotta do the six month review."
But we've got to remember though, that it's not only, it's not only your position. We've got all the other people.
The department heads and the non-union...
That's it. So, if you're doing six-month reviews for all of them, that's what I mean.
Right, that's...
That will be very time-consuming.
But I think it should be optional. If an employee says, "I really want the interim one, because I need some guidance."
Right.
You made it optional, right?
I think it's optional, but I think it's important that employees feel empowered to request it, and not look at evaluations as a bad thing, or like, "Ugh, I have to do that." They're good. They get everything out in the open, and you know where you stand. So, you know, no one likes to tell somebody that they're doing a bad job, but I think stating expectations is very important, and that's how you grow as an employee, once you know what the expectations are and you meet them.
And each, each one will have an opportunity. If something changes, that they can say, "Hey, I want the six months, because I gotta, I gotta, I gotta make some changes on what we originally discussed and where I'm going." And, you know, I think those are, it's a good opportunity.
The only, oh, go ahead.
I guess I just have one, again, procedural question. So, let's say, kind of given the scenario that Selectman Goulart proposed, where someone said, "Oh, I need to change things, my goals have changed." Once the evaluate states that they want the mid-year review, is the department head or whoever then obligated to do it? Now, it's not optional.
I would say so, yes.
Right, I would think so.
All right. So, once one party requests it, okay, I understand.
As far as voting on this tonight, I know you've read it, I've read it, I'm satisfied with it. But I'm not sure Selectman Goulart has read it, so...
No.
She made it, so she, you know...
We worked, we worked on this, you know.
Because you had some concerns with the last evaluation, I want to make sure we're all on the same page, that we all agree that this is a good evaluation form, so I'm satisfied with it.
When she still has, you know, to the end of October, to, yeah, if she finds something or...
This is, I've actually, what, again, what we put together with the bits and pieces is very close to what we had, ours was mandatory, you didn't have a choice, six months and a year. So, I've actually worked under a system with this kind of a form, and the reason I mentioned that is that, as I said, we had one big bugaboo hit the fan, and that was Y-2K. And so anyhow, I think, but, you know, I'm comfortable what we've done here. The other thing too is, so, we put this in place, we do it for a year, and if we find out it needs some fine tuning or something added, we just do it the next time.
Absolutely. Do we want to, so we would reserve the vote until...
The third reading, yes.
So, does, do we want to start the reading?
I'll read this, I'll read it.
Who would like to do it?
All right, I'll read it. I know, I feel, I'll give you guys a break. And I also do have a change, because now, under the Purpose and Applicability section of the policy, that last line, "Evaluation shall take place in the month of January each year with a mid-year review in June if requested," that would be my only addition. Okay, here we go. Performance Evaluation Policy and Procedure. Background: The town of Dayton seeks to professionalize its municipal operations and as such is introducing a performance evaluation policy and procedure. The employee is expected to provide input for discussion, and the evaluator is expected to respond to the employee's input as well as to provide feedback on the employee's performance. Purpose and Applicability: I should also mention that the date of effective date for this would be January 1st, 2019. So, we'll have this in place, and then we'll be able to get ready for January. Performance evaluations are intended to provide a formal opportunity for two-way communication between the employee and the Board of Selectmen or its designee, here and after referred to as "evaluator," to enhance the professionalism and performance of employees. Performance evaluations provide evaluation information for the continuous improvement of performance, and also aid in uniting all departments to work toward common goals and plans. This policy shall apply to all employees under the appointment and supervision of the Board of Selectmen. Union personnel and elected officials shall not be subject to this policy. Evaluation shall take place in the month of January each year with a mid-year review in June if requested. Process: Number one, the evaluator will secure a copy of the employee's job description. The evaluator, which actually is not a word and should say employee, will submit a self-evaluation to the evaluator using the performance evaluation form that is attached to this policy. The employee should make note of any topics that he or she would like to address in the discussion with the evaluator. The employee should also list any accomplishments or achievements of goals that have or have not been completed. Two, after reviewing the employee's self-assessment, the evaluator will provide a written evaluation and comments on the performance evaluation form. The performance evaluation form will indicate the employee's progress in achieving the designated goals. Each goal will be addressed individually by the evaluator, and specific comments, commendations, concerns, and/or recommendations for improvement shall also be included. The self-assessment shall be attached to the evaluator's evaluation. Together, these will constitute the complete evaluation. Three, the evaluator and the employee will have a meeting to discuss the review, any topics of concern or special importance to either party, and to communicate about performance during the review period. Included in this meeting, the two parties will agree on a set of four goals to be accomplished during the next review period. After the meeting, the employee will have the opportunity to respond in writing to any comments or ratings in the performance evaluation, if desired. Any written response shall be affixed to the evaluation. The employee and evaluator both will sign the performance evaluation form. The original shall be kept in the employee's personnel file, and the employee and supervisor shall each be given a copy. Mid-year review. One, there shall be a mid-year review in July of the review period. I suppose that should be edited as well.
May, right?
There shall be a, there may be an optional, may be an optional, there may be an...
May just kind of implies, maybe or not.
Right, a mid-year review.
There may be a mid-year review in July of the review period. The evaluator shall endeavor at all times to notify an employee, either orally or in writing, whenever the evaluator feels that a member's performance is not meeting professional standards or expectations. The purpose of this provision is to provide employees with as much advance notice as possible of concerns that the board or the town administrator may have regarding the employee's job performance, and to provide the opportunity to resolve such concerns. That's there so that a supervisor isn't, like, harassing somebody. Item two, between June 1st and July 1st, the evaluator and the employee may, at the option of the evaluator...
Or the evaluator.
Or employee.
Yep.
Back to the paragraph one, on the front, we said "if requested," so there may be, do we want to say "if requested"?
I was thinking that.
There may be a mid-year review in July of the review period, if requested.
Yeah, we'll keep it consistent.
Do we want to say that?
I was thinking, "if requested," or "at the option of either the evaluator or employee."
Oh, so take some out of two, in, in other words, kind of combine the parts.
Yeah, to make that say what it should say. So, "at the option," all right, "there may be a mid-year review in July of the review period at the option of either the evaluator or the employee." Sorry, public, I can't write fast.
Why we do this?
That's right. So, now, what does this mean for two? Between June 1st and July 1st, the evaluator and the employee may, at the option of either party, I'm going to stress so we don't meet, for a mid-year review, if the evaluator has concerns about the attainment of goal, if, so that should also say "if either party." For a mid-year review, if either party has concerns about the attainment of the goals to date by the employee, or any other concerns about the employee's performance, the employee may also request a mid-year review of here. So, you know what I'm going to do? Rewrite this whole thing.
Okay.
I get the intention, so we'll rewrite that.
And you'll provide us with, next time, the reading will have a new copy.
Yes, exactly. Three, during the mid-year review, the evaluator and the employee shall identify specific areas of concern, state the reasons for his or her concern, and outline recommendations to address those concerns which shall be set forth in writing. In the event that a member disagrees with any of the concerns or recommendations of the, that's a employee. In the event that an employee disagrees with any of the concerns or recommendations of the evaluator, the employee shall have the right to respond in writing. Also during the mid-year review, the employee shall be afforded the opportunity to update or tweak any goals agreed to should circumstances change surrounding that particular goal. Item four, nothing in this section shall preclude the evaluator from identifying areas of improvement or concern in the annual review. So, that's there so that, just in case there was an improvement or something else arose, we could also say it. Goals. Number one, there shall be four goals listed in the performance evaluation form. Two goals shall be proposed by the employee...
From, form.
From, yeah, form.
Form.
Two goals shall be proposed by the employee, and two goals shall be proposed by the evaluator. Goals shall be smart, specific, which means clear and unambiguous, measurable, meaning results must be measurable in some way, attainable, must be realistic and attainable by the average employee, relevant, must relate to the department's overall mission, time-bound, must have a definite starting and endpoint. Additionally, goals should not be dependent upon too many outside factors that cannot reasonably be controlled by the employee. And then your signatures.
One comment, under relevant, must relate to the department's overall mission. Should we also say, "and something about the town"?
Yeah, sure, and town.
So, the department's mission, but also, if you will, the overall town mission or...
Aligning with the town master plan.
We don't have a mission statement, do we?
Not yet.
No.
Just the department's kind of...
I mean, we have the master plan.
Right, right.
Which is like a, you know...
But not just, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, okay.
I don't have any problem adding "and town," if that's what we're doing.
Somehow they're included in there. If anyone's interested, we have copies of the source documents we looked at, if anyone wants to look at them and see if they see anything else that might ring a bell or whatever.
And a good part of this is from the state evaluation that you were talking about, like, that spot, I remember when you were doing evaluations, that we had the same...
Kind of basic.
Right, so, that's good.
Did you like to do two a year, in your department?
No, once a year, it was once a year.
We do two at my, my company right now, mid-year and year-end.
You were county, right?
I was state.
Oh, you were state, okay, okay.
This is pretty standard. They do it in private. I work in private industry, they do this as well. Good work.
Thank you.
Did anybody have anything they wanted to add about the policy or the form, forms? Okay.
I like it.
Thank you, Matt. Can I take the floor back?
Yeah, of course, I'm done.
So, as I said, I have got, I've got copies of the source documents. If anybody wants to just say, "Hey, I want to see a couple of these towns, we've got them."
Good work. Very good work, colleagues.
Thank you.
Okay. I was going to go on to old business, but we have some experts in the crowd tonight, so I would ask my colleagues, one of you, to make a motion. If we could move to the 8A under new business, since we have our animal control officer here?
Did we decide whether or not we have to make a motion? I know we had some discussion.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I thought we had decided it wasn't necessary.
You can agree, we've agreed.
I, you can change it. We can go to new business A.
8A?
Yep.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. An 8A for our public discussion of a scope of services for grant funds earmarked for the Dayton Animal Shelter to improve services and facilities. And just a very brief background, Senator Mark Pacico put in $25,000, it was an earmark for funding for the Dayton Animal Shelter, and it actually passed. So, we do have these funds, and we have our animal control officer here, so we can discuss how, at least begin the discussion on how we would like to see those funds used. Animal, you can come up, don't be shy. Thank you for being here.
So, we have the $25,000. We need to decide exactly how we're going to use it. It can't be used for administrative purposes. It has to be used for a building, or a facility, or sheltering, or how I carry out my job. It can't be used for administrative purposes. So, I know we've talked about maybe having, moving into a new facility, not a new facility, an old facility, but a new facility for me. I think we need to discuss what we're going to do so I can get what I need to go, the scope out to these people, so we can get what we need done.
Is a new van considered administrative?
I think so.
Because if it's not, that would be a great...
I think so.
My understanding is it has to be for the, like, a facility...
Is there a time limit on...
It's a, it's just for this year, it has to be done, but it sounded like she wanted to get everything in so she can, she says, "I'm currently working on contracts and invoicing schedules, so can you please send a scope of services detailed proposal explaining what the funds would be used for and budget narrative for this award, along with the contact name and email address?" So, she sounded like she wanted to get this going, because they want to...
That is what it sounded like.
Well, because they want to give us, if we have to use it by the end of the fiscal year, they need to give us as much time as possible to take care of it.
One of the things, and, and obviously she's on vacation right now, but Jim had some good ideas about converting a section of the existing police station, and he would be a good resource to give you the kind of description you need for that grant.
Right. I just want to, I guess the thing is, is that what we're looking to do, or am I, is that not on the table, and I need to figure out to redo, you know, to update up where I am now? I guess that's my biggest question is, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask, so I know where the current facility is. That was supposed to be, was that permanent? Like, was that, I thought it was always temporary, right?
It was never supposed to be permanent. It's not supposed to be a shelter, per se, as much as I have to hold dogs or animals for seven days, and then during those seven days, if I haven't heard from somebody in two or three days, I start working at that time to try to find foster homes, so they're not staying in the shelter, or find a rescue that will take them. I'm very good, the pit bulls that I get, I have a pit bull rescue that's very good about coming down and getting my pits and putting them in foster. I have a dog right now in foster that will be getting spayed in a couple weeks, those kinds of things. I try not to keep it up there very long if I don't have to, because there is no heat, no air conditioning, so...
From the town's perspective, what would be, I know, I'm looking at you, I'm sorry. What would be potential issues if that were to happen? If we were to, correct, to specifically the old police station?
Right. So, it would have to be converted, number one. There, there's a roof problem with the, where the two trailers meet on the seams. I mean, I guess, I think...
Jim wasn't talking about those. He was talking about the original structure.
Yeah, the trailers wouldn't be there, the last I knew.
As in, they'd be removed. Right, exactly. So, that's my thought. So, we would remove the trailers, and we would need to gut this thing a little bit, just to...
A little, I mean...
Freshen it up.
A little, I mean, to freshen it up, but the rooms, I mean, I know somewhat what the rooms are there. There are some rooms that I need, uh, a quarantine room, which I don't have. If I bring in an animal that is, appears sick, or really bring in an animal that I don't know, I'm supposed to quarantine it, it's not supposed to be out in general public.
Right.
At this point, I don't have that. It's gotta have its own air, its own everything, own sink. I can't take cats right now, I'd like to have a cat room.
I think that, honestly, and I understand the current situation, but I never, I mean, I understood why they weren't allowed there, but it is an animal shelter.
Well, there's more than just the facility, there was more to that than that.
I understand.
I, I would like to have a cat room. I would love to have a room that I can bathe dogs and do that kind of stuff. And if we have those kinds of rooms, I can have people come in and do shots and to do that kind of stuff if I had, you know.
I also, my favorite part of your plan was, um, the kids coming in to read, because that is symbiotic, that's good for the animals and that's good for the kids.
Right.
And, um, I just am a little partial to that plan, so.
Do you feel that the size, the overall size of the original, it was the garage.
Right.
Is adequate for what you need?
Yes, at, at this point, yes.
And would it just be the animal, like, is this?
You said I was gonna be next.
Sorry. So we'll go back to that.
Is there, uh, any other group in town that's interested in using the old police station for anything other than?
Yes, there is.
There is someone from Parks and Recreation who has been advocating for office space for quite a while. My position was simp, because they were saying they needed a computer. I think the town should somewhere in this building have a computer for public use that's hooked up to the printer so when someone comes. So I think that could be like an amicable way around them being there.
Once conservation moves out of their room and goes over to Old Town Hall full-time when the meeting room's done, we can expand the, the wall out for cable and add some, um, climate control there because their equip, that room runs hot.
Understand.
And then build out like a little office nook, and that would be the shared, that's my thinking. That would be the shared space, because then he'd have access, or they would have access to printers, town hall issues, a phone line, um, so other things that kind of opens up. But I am more into this plan with the trailers being removed. Um, my only question is, how far does twenty-five thousand dollars go? And does, you know, are we gonna be putting in matching money or, you know, how's that go?
We probably should, um, plan on a warrant article for the special.
For special.
Because Jim, if we get the twenty-five, Jim can come up with the rest of the, the total cost, and we can deduct the twenty-five, and then we will have money to work with.
Yeah, I also have a, I don't know how much is in it. Last I knew, there was a couple of thousand dollars fund that's been set aside that either people have given me or stuff marked for the animal shelter, not to use for anything besides the animal shelter. Jen would know how much is.
Is that like friends' money?
It wasn't friends' money.
Wasn't the friends, okay.
It wasn't friends' money, it was donations and that kind of stuff, so. I, I wanna say there's like three, four thousand dollars in there, but I know that's not much, but there's some.
Every bit helps.
Right, there's some in there.
If we were to, one second, Mr. Ferry, I see you back there. If we were to, uh, invest in this conversion, whatever word you wanna use for the old police station into the animal control office or shelter, whatever word you'd like to use, is there a plan to kind of expand services and recoup any funds that might be expended to make that happen?
There would be, we could do a lot more with adoptions, because right now I don't charge for adoptions, I just ask for donation. Our new leash lawyer is gonna start bringing in some money. I'm afraid, or not afraid. So, and there'll be, I'll be able to shelter more dogs and stuff like, and that kind of stuff. Right now, if somebody calls me and says, I wanna get rid of my dog because it bit somebody or it just doesn't fit in my house, I have to refer them out somewhere. Because most of those dogs, you can't keep in the kennel for very long, or you end up with a really bad dog. So, I refer them out. If we have an, an area that we can let them run around in and that kind of stuff, it's much easier and much pleasant.
So that is my, 'cause I'm trying, all right, what's the other side of this? What are people who are not in favor gonna say? So I think of noise, barking, is it a good neighbor to the tennis courts? Is there like a courtyard that you could build to keep the dogs inside, so that, you know, that kind of thing?
It's an honest, personal opinion, I feel like it's in a very residential area right now, and have, I've never heard any complaints.
We did in the beginning.
You did, from, from the folks next door?
We did in the beginning, but, you know, if it's, if you have the right, well, if you have the right facility, you have music going, you have that kind of stuff going, it, it lessens the anxiety of everything that's in the shelter.
And perhaps like, if we're gonna be building, we can soundproof certain aspects. So I think, just something to think about, but I think.
You know what, I talked to Jim about it, uh, because it is on a floodplain. Um, Jim said there is a way, because of the height of the ceilings, to raise the floor, and I'm not sure I'm using the right terms, but he knew there was a way to do that so that the, there would be some elevation.
Lifts it out.
It wouldn't be sitting right where it is now.
And I thought, not to put you on the spot.
Mr. Ferry.
But I thought you told me that it was already lifted a little bit.
Yes, when you go in the, the second one, the floor's been elevated many times. Well, Mr. Agia, I was identifying the level that needs to be satisfied with.
So were you talking about going before this special town meeting for additional funds?
Well, we would have to, uh, if we have to do this, we would have to.
Yeah, but we don't know how much money we need, right? So I, I'm a little troubled by that. We're gonna go before the town and then, suppose it's not enough, we're gonna go back, excuse me. We're gonna go, uh, back to the townspeople again and then ask for additional funds. So I would hope that we have a fixed number, a realistic number. Twenty-five thousand dollars is not gonna do it. I agree. I think the police station is a good spot to put the, the animal shelter.
I guess, and I agree with you a hundred percent, I'm sure Selecting Goulart would too. Um, my concern would be losing out on the money. And we know we need to do something with the animal shelter anyway, so at least we're getting twenty-five thousand dollars towards a solution rather than just the town raising appropriate free cash, whatever it is.
And I, I think there are options.
And one of my suggestions was just to put a note in the folder now to remind us to get a number from Jim, when he, Mr. Agia, when he gets back.
Please.
And say to him, we need to know what the total project would be to make this into the animal shelter. We have a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, we have some money in another com. But, and then when we go to town meeting with a number, we can also explain to people, this is actually contingent on us doing what we have to do to get this grant money. If we don't get this grant money, it's not gonna happen. But we can't, we can't have some money from the town or else we can't do the project, and we're gonna lose the grant money.
My other concern about that would be, I would hope that the building commissioner, because we all know Old Town Hall ended up being more expensive than was initially, thought we would be giving higher estimates, and I know that's tough when you're trying to sell a project to the public, I get it. Um, but I would hope that we wouldn't undersell it and we would just oversell it, and then if we don't end up using all the money, it can go back into the general fund, so. I would hope that we do that.
I do have cages and stuff that were given to me from Bristol Aggie, so those will be able to be worked into. There, there was a grooming table given to me and some cages, so those will be able to be used.
Mr. Ferry, and then Ms. Quinn, and then Madam Administrator.
Sorry.
Mr. Ferry.
Point of order, so when that call is open, you guys know what you're doing. But does it have to go on a special, or it should check that point better? It's a good question, we should probably.
I don't think so, 'cause it's from this, but then.
From the agricultural, something, something.
Does it have a match component to it?
Don't believe it does.
Not according to the email, anyway.
No.
Yeah.
FY nineteen, Agricultural Resource Administration Fund and earmarked for the Dyton Animal Shelter has been made available for the funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Funds are to be approved, uh, to improve services and facilities at the Dyton Animal Shelter in the town of Dyton and shall not be used for administrative purposes.
Right, I was saying, in line, like, you might have ninety money.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
But that's because you are, you are borrowing, or not borrowing, but you're expending money in anticipation of reimbursement.
Correct.
This, this is not reimbursable, right?
Right.
This is going into a pot for us.
Ms. Quinn.
So, I, I guess my question would be, uh, for you. Seeing that you must have lots of connections in other towns with other various shelters, this is a very specific build-out. It's not really something that, you know, we can, or a building inspector even could probably price out exact. Do you know of any contacts, um, in other shelters that have done renovations?
Not done with renovations, Agar, a year ago. I wanna say just built a whole new shelter.
So they might be able to have like a specific scope of work? Or something that you could maybe go off on that could maybe improve the?
I mean, there are people even in the, in, um, state that can help me with that.
Just to get that number.
Right, well, exactly, the things that I need, like, what do I need for the quarantine room? The specific things that you need for the quarantine, I basically know, but they know, you know. And there might be stuff on bid lists that I don't know about and that kind of stuff, yeah.
Read them out.
So, all those kinds of things, I don't know, I don't do that very often.
I know in the Old Town Hall, the thing that caused the price to escalate, the, the one thing, there were some other smaller ones, but in the main hall, the plan was to patch the cracking walls, uh, sheet rock them, and when they started to attempt repairs, the walls kept crumbling and it was like sheet rock the whole thing. So that was an added expense that wasn't part of the original plan.
That is a good, and I, I wasn't making an indictment on anybody.
No, no, no.
But, you know, we, things happen, un, unfor, you try to predict the future, we are not Miss Cleo, so things happen and things change. So we should just be honest with people, put a higher number than what we think. After Stacy does her research, Jim obviously will do his due diligence, our building commissioner as well. Just so we don't have to come back, you, you know what I mean?
Completely understand what you're saying.
I'm just wondering if we can do this in two weeks, though, because that's when we're gonna have the warrants ready, so.
Well, you don't have to have the exact figure, I mean, we have to have it.
But it has to be run by the finance committee, whether, you know, they're gonna have to take a look at it, so they're gonna want a figure. And we did the same situation with the police station, we went back to the town a couple of times asking for additional funds. So I, I'm with you a hundred percent. I just, we need to go to the town and ask for the amount of money that we're gonna need, not, uh, extra money that could end up getting spent, any, you know.
What's the goal to it?
Yes, so I'm just, great to get the, you know, Senator Pacheco, no relation to me. Twenty-five thousand dollars, it's great that he, you know, had that passed. And I believe a hundred percent that we should be moving it to the police station. I just wanna be, give the townspeople a realistic figure, because I'm not gonna go back before the townspeople and ask for additional funds.
So I think, a plan.
A plan, but a, a realistic, I'm, I'm not sure that our building commissioner can give us the final answer as to how much it's gonna cost. So we do have to look at other.
Can we at least, for the sake of moving forward, again, not everything is hashed out tonight, of course, 'cause we need to let things develop, but can we at least have a vote, and no matter which way it falls, on at least, are we gonna have this moved to the old police station, like, is that the plan? So we at least know whether we're renovating the current structure on Tremont Street or?
I'll make a motion that we move the animal shelter to the old police station.
May I?
When it's vacated.
And does that mean removal of the trailers?
Excuse me?
Does that mean removal of the trailers?
Is that?
Put that as an amendment.
Yeah, but is that, the building commissioner decided, fearless, they wanna?
I don't know if he's decided what they're gonna do. I don't see myself using the trailers, so if somebody else can, remove them, because we talked about removing them and putting in like French, almost French doors so I can back up and be able to let animals in kind of thing. So them not being there would be a help to me.
And the removal of the trailers, the two trailers there.
All one motion?
All one motion.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second discussion.
I am just going to reach out to, um, a foundation called the Stanton Foundation and see what might be available to us to help us. So we'll see. They love dogs, and so do we.
And is this all dependent, right, now, this doesn't need to be part of the motion, but if this is economically feasible for the town, that's kind of underlying all of this, is that correct?
You're basically authorizing us to explore moving the animal shelter or moving the operations to the old police station in the best interest of the town. Working in the best interest of the town.
And even if it ends up on the town meeting warrant, if something happens before that meeting, there can be no motion if we find out whatever.
Right.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
What's the cutoff point for?
Uh, you haven't voted to change it, but I'm gonna request the nineteenth. I'm requesting the ninth, that you amend your motion for the nineteenth. Yes, and it just doesn't leave us enough time, um, so we're requesting the nineteenth, and that would work better for us.
We're mailing out the warrant and all that, okay, so you need some time.
We need some time.
I understand. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mrs. Ferry, we appreciate it.
Some resolution to that, so that's good. I'll call the Stanton Foundation tomorrow.
We may end up calling it the Ferry Building, since both of the ferries occupy it at one time.
Oh, that's fun.
I do wanna thank you for bringing this to my attention, and I know, I know how things are, like, you probably didn't wanna ask, but, um, I really do appreciate you being on top of this very much, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're gonna.
One other question, the, the runs that were built.
We can move those.
Oh, because that, they did, he did a beautiful job constructing those runs.
We can move those, the inside runs, number two.
Okay, so at this time, we'll go back to old business. Is Mr. Ferry?
He is here for something.
Do we want, Mr. Ferry, would you like to get home? Have dinner, I don't know him a lot.
Yes.
Okay. So, is it? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take agenda item eight C out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Award contract for appraisal services, complete streets program, Mr. Ferry.
That's actually not what he's here for, but you can comment.
This is a twist ending. Twist beginning.
Do you wanna talk about complete?
You have the floor, sir.
Well, you have the, you have some information on that motion?
Yes, um, so, complete streets, the town is great and has its prioritization plan. We got our surveying for third, our top three projects. And, um, we are looking for the board to award a appraisal services contract to Mr. Claude Giraud, um, who is our resident appraiser. He will be doing twenty-two easements, the figure came in at twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Can you just repeat that number?
Yes, twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for twenty-two easements along Somerset Avenue. Is that right?
And Pearl Street.
And Pearl Street.
Pearl School, the corner.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we award the contract for appraisal services, the complete streets program, the sidewalk building, uh, project, to Mr. Claude Giraud in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to include Somerset Avenue, Pearl, and a small portion of School Street.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take agenda item eight, aye, out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Before you begin, Mr. Ferry, I just wanted to ask, was the date of September thirtieth, twenty sixteen, the actual accurate date on this document?
Yes, yes, it is, that's a sample, yes. That's not a full request, that's just what they would be doing, sorry, you don't know what that is, I gotcha.
Because he looks a little confused. Ms. Superintendent Ferry, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Mary wasn't sure I was gonna be here, that's why she did a little bit of work on it. And she's been, um, contemplating my requests for some additional help. As, as you know, we had a late start this year because of the type of storms we had last winter. Actually, I still have three pending repairs from last winter, um, still to work on. So I'm, brings up, and we try, we do have a very ambitious fall, trying to do some drainage work and some road repairs prior to some pavement projects that's still not submitted yet. In lieu of that, in anticipating, we are already in a transition of a wonderful season coming. I'm a little concerned about being readily prepared for this winter. So I'm just requesting some part-time help as needed, do, uh, assigned work, laboring.
I guess my first question is, Madam Administrator, is there, would we need a special town meeting article to fund this? We already have the?
Already have the funds, it is as needed, less than twenty hours a week, non-benefited. They would have all the qualifications that our full-time labors would have, but this would be a, an as-needed position, and there is funding available, it's not.
Yeah, it's.
I don't wanna say that it's not creating a position, but it's not truly creating.
We've had part-timers in the past, I've had a part-time line in my budget, plus we've lost, uh, the clerical help. I've had a part-time line in my budget, plus we've lost the clerical help, so we haven't been tapping that line yet.
Oh, okay.
So, we are healthy on that part.
I actually don't particularly have any questions. I did read the Farmer's Almanac. We are supposed to have a rough winter, so I do my due diligence as well.
I don't know if you have the updated version.
I may not. You'll have to loan me a copy.
I believe in science, not the...
That one that counts is the Mr. Ferry version.
Does that, I'm, yeah.
Look, I do have a question. As everybody knows, we've had some of your labors working next door. When that finishes up, are you gonna be able to utilize these employees? How many, how many employees are working next door, and are they working full-time over there?
I'm sorry.
No. Are they working full-time, 20 hours a week? Where are they working over there?
For the most part, I have one employee next door. I pull them out of there as needed. My last two hires were supposed to have complimentary skills for town projects such as that. So, if it fits in there, I'm not complimenting the project for all its needs, because I have other needs up in the town.
Yeah, well, so Mike Asensio is then, we're wrapping that up next, though. I believe sometime in October it may be finished, so whether or not we should be hiring part-time employees or just wait until we get...
Well, that's, that's why I suggested as needed, and we don't owe them.
Oh, so, so if they come back and then they're not needed...
Or if I don't need them, they don't.
Okay.
This is very akin to a reserve police officer.
That's what I was just, I was thinking that. It's a reserve, part-time, as-needed laborer, correct?
Assistant.
Alright. That is a good point, though. Thank you.
And we do have funds, so we're not gonna go back before the town, asking for additional...
That can be a stipulation, but yes, there are funds, but you can...
So, the individual who was doing the adminis, some administrative work for Mr. Ferry, so that has freed up some...
And that money can be utilized for part-time labor.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the request of Superintendent Ferry to be allowed to hire additional help as needed on call for specific requirements or needs. Does that work?
Yes.
We'll just add using available funds to that motion.
Yes, yes.
I'll second that motion if that's added.
Good work. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one question. Are you looking at some kind of clerical support for him?
Oh, I, well, this is how this came about. I asked him, "How are you doing without any part-time help?" And what I meant was clerical, and then he said, "Well, I could use a laborer." And here we are.
To answer your question, we're still exploring that. As you know, Mallory's taken on a few things out of my office, and there are actually some major projects, and which are more fitting for a town administrator anyways. So, we're still seeing what those needs really are as far as clerical needs, and as long as she keeps saying yes, I'll keep pushing stuff her way.
Will you reassess that before, like, the annual town meeting, if you do decide that you do need some kind of...
I would hope it would be put in the budget.
We've been doing that like two or three times a month.
Okay. One request. If you could tell the gentlemen or gentlemen who have been working in Old Town Hall that they're doing a great job, let them know.
Excellent job.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. You wanna stick around for anything else?
I do have some public input, I guess, because I was forced to go to a meeting today.
Solid waste.
You can do that now, Mr. Ferry.
Yeah, it would be public input. There was a couple of good takeaways. Most of it's gonna be for the emergency management part and border health. One was from Brooke Nash, who was one of the speakers from DEP, and the other one was John Fisher from DEP. And you'll hear more about that in our next emergency planning meeting and preparedness. And some good information came back about recycling and contaminated recycling. Now, you already stopped with border health this evening and shared that with them. But what I wanna take up your time about tonight was, one of the other takeaways was, in our town, we have some people with ELA, excessive litter addiction, and they do a good job in the fall, in the springtime, right around Earth Day. And we expanded on it quite a bit this morning, and it was a very good takeaway. Most of the towns that are getting on and involved with the Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, they're adopting that logo, putting it in their own town website, and they're, once when this gets going, they're talking five to 800 people volunteering for the day. It's more than around, I think we had around 30, not counting the fire explorers and voice scouts. So, so we need, they suggested that a committee is actually considered informed. You don't have to do that tonight, something to look into, but you really need some people with the ELA syndrome, and let them run with it.
I like that. Thank you.
Does that include Adopt a Highway?
Nope.
No.
You, that committee can come up with that and adopt the roads, those type of ideas, and that can come out of that possible committee, but you really need someone to run with this and be excited about it, and it's, it's very addictive, so.
It would be the Keep Dayton Beautiful group.
Correct. And the testimony's about it, and we do see it. This, this is one of the cleanest years our towns experienced. I'm sure you all noticed that. And we have people that are active picking up litter on their own streets, their own neighborhoods, and it does make a difference, because when the street is clean, people are less apt to litter further.
Absolutely.
So, that's what it all comes down to, and inadvertently, it reduces waste going into a landfill. Because when you have the Earth Day cleanup, we're not really sorting it. It's no really easy way of having clean recyclables coming out of it. So, even a small town like us, I think we did close to two ton last spring, so.
So, the Make Dayton Clean Again Committee?
So, there's a contact here. I'll give you some brochures I picked up, and the guy that's really pushing this is Anil Rain, and he has, also has a company that helps promote this, you know, with t-shirts and stuff like that. He's very involved with that.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry.
Whoops, you were with the Kathy Merzus group?
Yes.
Is that where you went? You remember Ed C., who is the director of, executive director, director of Mass Recycle, he was at our meeting today talking about that at MMA, so they're getting to a discussion of the cleaning up of solid waste, the single-use grocery store bags, all of that.
That's the biggest thing they'd like to focus on. There's a variety of things that contaminate the recyclables in the single stream. The main thing is, is keep the plastic bags out of the recycling. If we can focus on that, it just gets better from there. There's a new link to cut and paste and put on their own website. I gave border health some instructions on how to do that this evening, and they're very excited, and that probably will be happening in the very near future, which Mass DEP will keep it up, and when they have an update, it would automatically update on our own website, so.
Okay.
So, are we gonna, next Earth Day, are we gonna, related to this, are we gonna make an effort to recycle stuff that we pick up on the sides of the street?
Well, we need to have it cleaner. That's what we're promoting, so if we can have a way of doing that.
But I picked up 135 nip things. They were all empty, I can tell you.
You can clean them out?
No, they were already emptied, but the bottled waters were half-full, but the, all the nips were empty. But, and I put them in my recycling bin.
We can explore that.
Because I think it's important that we recycle whatever we can.
You'd have to have everyone to be really, so I do Easton's Cleanup Day, and there's monetary incentive. I usually get $1.50 every time, but you have to be organized with your group, and if one person concentrates on recyclables, you can designate a bag, but you just, everyone has, you gotta be organized.
Have orange bags be recyclables, black bags be...
And like, with your people, you're just gonna be like, okay, I'm gonna focus on nip bottles and recyclables, and you just have to do it that way, so. Because otherwise, it's, there's no way. There's no way for you to go pick through. You'd be spending hours.
You know, I separated the nip bottles as I was, because I just realized how many there were on Brook Street. So, I kept them separated, and then counted them, and I suggest the next year we have a contest as who gets the most nip. You can't bring your own, but to who?
Crowe chip ticket.
So, now is actually a good time to start planning. I know, I know it's tough in January just to coordinate them when they snow on the ground and whatnot. One of the biggest downfalls I saw last pickup we had, we had a good turnout. We had a group working on Maple Street, and a whole bunch of people going to the complex didn't know anything about it, and they contacted us afterwards, wanted to know why they weren't notified. So, that, that's a big resource right there. That comp, all those people that use that complex could have been involved in their own community. So, if the numbers for the volunteers would have jumped tremendously if they was planning, and obviously, now is a good time before they plan their days also.
We should get Vicky Piazza involved in this, because she's really been involved with Earth Day.
Yeah, she's got it started.
Maybe we could put it on the agenda and then ask her if she'd like to come. I think that'd be great.
Did you get any information about grant money for recycling projects? Because they talked about this at our meeting today, not in detail, but I was thinking of you. I didn't know if you had gone or not.
The first round is picked already. Later this month, if I have my, the equipment part and the people that don't have the plans, you know, all their ducks in a row, those are gonna be picked further. As far as the grants we were looking at with the border health for the solid, the rigid plastics and whatnot, our border health is gonna, I believe they're gonna vote to table it right now and just monitor the market. Right now, you gotta pay quite a bit to get rid of it, and there's no market for it, and then it becomes part of your reporting, so it makes sense to keep it the way it is. Right now, rigids don't go in a landfill. It's sorted at the other end in New Bedford anyways, so that's a good thing it's not in a landfill already, so why create another expense and reportable issue? So, right now, we're monitoring that. Okay?
Alright. Thank you very much, Superintendent Ferry. Anything else? No.
That's it, I think.
That's why you can, right?
We can have dinner now.
I just wanna commend you if you had any part in getting the grass cut along 138.
That's what I said to him today.
Because now we can see the guardrails.
No, I had nothing to do with that. They did not respond. I was, I believe it was yourself, Brad, to ask me to try to get a little message. Damn, return my calls.
But they got the message.
I suggested, I suggested that Mallory, somebody should write a thank you note, but thank them for doing their job.
Do you get that too, though, when you do your job?
Yeah, that's something you asked her.
They do, and I appreciate that a lot, actually.
Did they do 44 also, or are they in the process? They only, 138?
They're 44, no.
So, we'll reserve the thank you card until they get one.
That might be because they're doing the top hole repair, so they might be just have that in the, yeah.
We'll monitor that.
But we'll reserve the thank you card. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry.
Yeah, all over. We gotta go back to 7A.
Alright, we're gonna go to 7A. Request to adjust the due date for submission of articles for special town meeting. I believe the, what we originally proposed was September 26th. We're thinking seven days back, so the 19th?
Correct.
End of day?
Noon.
We said noon.
Alright.
That just allows us to literally sit here all day, craft the warrant, send it to town council, and get everything we need to do. On the 26th, you'll vote to place warrant articles on the agenda, on the warrant, and they will be sent out to the public.
My concern with that noon time is that, and we had a conversation, Sylvia Way.
Sylvia's Way.
The planning board is meeting September 19th at night, 6:00, 6:30, to decide whether or not they're gonna recommend that Sylvia Way become a public way.
Can we make one specific exception?
If I know that it's coming, so it's actually already on my list.
Oh, put a placeholder.
It's already on my list to include it. If I know it's coming, then, you know, it's there. It's, for me, it's a deadline. Like, I'm not a jerk. Like, if I know that it's coming, I'll get it on there. It's a deadline for everyone to know. I need to tell the Board of Selectmen's Office and Mallory that this is what I'm looking for, and similar to what Stacy's doing right now. We don't have to have every particular right away. We can work on it during that week, and then what really matters is the 26th.
Also, they wouldn't be able to get an article to us before they have that hearing, so I think that that's like a very reasonable, if someone just doesn't do it, then we wouldn't accept it legally.
And I actually, I plan on being here that night. Their meeting is the 19th, in case anybody wants to go, and I plan on hanging around and waiting for what they have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adjust the due date, that we revise the due date for the submission of special town meeting articles from September 26th to September 19th at noon time in the Selectmen's Office.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Onto new business. We already did A, so 8B. Vote to designate Dayton Town Hall lower level as the official site for early voting in Dayton. Madam Administrator, should I at least just read the dates for the early voting, at the very minimum? Just for folks who are not aware, we, we have been uploading the entire packet with all the materials we have tonight, so if you'd like to read this memorandum from our town clerk to the Secretary of the Commonwealth, you can. It is online under the Board of Selectmen Agenda and Meeting Minutes. Hours are as follows for the dates of early voting. October 22nd, 2018 through November 1st, 2018, Dayton Town Hall is not open on Fridays. October 22nd, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. October 23rd, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. October 24th, 2016. Can we get this changed before we submit this? October 24th, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 8 p.m. October 25th, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. October 29th, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. October 30th, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. October 31st, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And November 1st, 2018, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And the change that I asked was simply from 2016 to 2018.
Scrivener's error.
Correct. Okay, so we should vote on this. I am accepting motions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve the dates for early voting as outlined in the memo from Board of Selectmen to the Secretary of State.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Good work, uh, fabulous town clerk, Sue Madeiras. Onto, we already did...
Oh, 8B. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we designate Dighton Town Hall lower level as the official site for early voting in Dighton as for the hours that were previously read.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for the catch, Selectman Goulart. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. We already did 8C, so we're moving on to designate Selectman Goulart to act on behalf of the town with regard to the Complete Streets program. I actually thought we did this in bulk with a bunch of other projects that she was working on when we did the discussion of your memorandum.
I just wanted to make sure.
That's fine. We can do an official.
She was, uh, working with Claude, so...
Do you want to do another vote, or? I have no issue. She's been working on it since pretty much its inception, so...
Great.
Do we need to...
Would you prefer a vote?
I'm trying to think if this was one.
I don't, I don't have a recollection of it.
It was, but it was all preliminary stuff because Mr. Ferry came to me and asked me to help him. But, but with this, um, um...
Your next step.
We voted that if a selectman was gonna take on a, a certain project, whether assigned or, or if they wanted to do it, it had to come before the board for a vote. So I think we have to vote.
I'll make a motion to designate Select, uh, President Goulart to act on behalf of the town with regards to Complete Streets program.
I will step down and second that motion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. And we'll give you a thank you note for your work on this. Thank you.
Um, so, so, um, Mrs. Aaronstein and I have met with Tom, and, um, how we're, we're divvying up the project, because there's so much to it. She's working with him on the reports that have to be filed with the state. I'm doing the actual, I'll call it fieldwork, as far as we get the plans from Mr. Delano. We got Mr. Jeru working on the appraisals. When we get all that in, I'll put that together. And then the board will have to meet individually, uh, in closed session with the property owners, like we did for the Center Street project, to discuss whatever. Okay?
Thank you very much, and good work. We do appreciate it. Next on the agenda, a recommendation from the town administrator to award bid for network services. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we made it to this step. So, um, everyone knows I've been talking about a network administrator, network support, upgrading. So we went out to bid for new IT services. So what we found out is we're actually getting a pretty good deal from Terminal. They were the lowest bidder based on the scope. And then I discussed with them a flat fee for service, um, I mean, a flat fee contract instead of fee for service, which I had actually talked to them about before even going out to bid. So with every, this is all detailed in my rec...
Were they amendable to that, Madam Administrator?
They were. Yeah. So the figure, the quote that you, I'm requesting that you award to Terminal is $18,900 for support for Old Town Hall and Town Hall. Um, this is our cloud-based support, our programs that we use, like Microsoft Word and that whole suite, and maintaining our, what they call Datto backup. So just keeping us up and running. They are also essentially on notice. Karen and I sat down with them and said, this is, these are our problems with what's been going on, and we want to fix them. So we talked about that. We're gonna start rolling out some policies about who orders a computer from where. Uh, we have had some computers purchased, not since I've been here, but previously. You know, they'll just run out to Staples because it's cheap. But that's not getting a business machine. That's your personal home computer, so that's not what we need to be doing. We need to order from them. Um, so rolling out those kinds of policies to make sure we have a better handle on it, asset tags or something similar, where we are controlling where the, exactly, a computer use policy, but controlling and knowing where our, um, equipment is. Uh, this also comes with a slew of upgrades, in, in the sense of, not upgrades, a slew of ideas on how to upgrade our infrastructure so that it works better. Some of this includes a simple phone call to Comcast to increase our internet speed. Others a little bit more involved, like getting the server out of the town accountant's office, converting the downstairs, um, to have an actual server room instead of that stuff being in the bathroom. So he's going to work with us on that, um, help us secure somebody who could do the work if we go that way. So they ended up being the lowest bidder. My recommendation, as is the recommendation of the IT committee, which is reconvened. Um, the addition of Dave Marvo was great, so there's three individuals. And they are now considering how to best lay out the town's network for all departments. So once the new police station's up and running, or maybe just before, they'll be meeting with Brian St. Marie of Terminal and figuring out how to get the police and fire appropriately talking, because right now it's not really that great. Um, so that's rolling out and some other problems that were highlighted. But they basically have a year to take care of this, work with us on this, and, and we'll go from there.
Is it your plan to, okay, so right now, if we have a problem, I'm literally nine times out of 10 just sending an email to Terminal Support. You get somebody you've never heard of.
Right.
Working on the issue. So is it gonna be communicated, if this is approved, to the employees that we're only contacting Brian St. Marie? Because the other concern I have is if we're contacting a bunch of different people or a generic email address and a bunch of different people are working on stuff, we have no idea of what common issues are.
Exactly.
What issues, you know, each department is confronting in terms of network issues. So is that your goal?
Yes. So Brian actually said the exact same thing, but on his side, because we do have this tendency, oh, it's $200 a call, I'll just deal with this. But if they are, if they are made aware that there's the problem, they can fix it on their end and stall future problems from happening. So that's why the, the flat fee contract is better. Um, and then I said, okay, so every time there's a problem, you want everybody to call you? And he said yes. So to me, that's carte blanche. Call him up, let him know, and, uh, he can help us build a more secure, more sound network.
So he'll be the only contact?
Um, no, he won't be. He was to call anytime. And I said, okay, Brian, I'm gonna look at you like the town's network administrator. And he said, fine, that's, that's what we're here for.
But everything goes through Mr. St. Marie, is what you're saying.
Yes. I want him to know, because, exactly. I want him to know what we're dealing with, because he's gonna be my guy to help me make sure that our network is what it needs to be.
So he may not be fixing the issue, but he is aware, and he has a list of keeping track of everything that's...
And I also don't want to make it inconvenient. If somebody wants to send an email to the Help Desk and the Support.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they CC Brian at the same time, so he's aware. But that all will be rolled out in this policy that we, you know, really will be a memo for me. Okay, this is how it's gonna work. If you need a computer, you're gonna purchase it through them, and, and so on and so forth.
Would we, do we have the potential to actually save a little bit of money by transitioning out of the fee for service?
You will.
So even though it's like $18,900 in addition to what's already been approved, really, we could...
So we actually have not yet paid for what we are on now. So I refuse to pay that.
Good work. Good work.
Sorry. But he's okay with that, and so this would be our annual expense and going forward. And it was still well below. The next lowest bidder, in case the public's interested, was $27,100. And it wouldn't have included what we've got going, so, um, it's a good deal for the town. It is the best value for the town. And we are starting a good relationship where both sides feel comfortable coming together and coming to a resolution.
Absolutely.
So down the road is, um, well, whatever support this will entail, if and when the TMLP thing comes down the road, we're gonna be in good shape?
Yes, we would still use them. TMLP would basically just be laying, like, the actual tangible stuff that we would use. And, and Terminal would still be monitoring our, our use and our network. And he's aware of our intention to join to a fiber optic network.
Okay.
And so he's given us a little bit, all right, we'll make sure this is at the police station, make sure you're doing this, so he's...
I know you said you talked to Ken Bell, so that's what I was wondering about. Okay.
Selectman Pacheco.
This money is already in the budget?
Correct.
So we're not asking for any additional money?
Actually, we have a little bit of a savings, because we ended up going out. I had requested a network administrator, and it was voted, I think, $31,000. So this is well below. But it will help us, help build up what we need to build up.
Any year from now, we'll reevaluate this and see how it's, uh, worked out.
To Selectman Goulart's point, one of the recommendations is to upgrade Comcast to better class. Would that, in the future, not be necessary if we're transitioning to fiber optic?
Definitely not be necessary if we're transitioning. Yes, absolutely. Yep. But the Old Town Hall has a better speed, and we've asked Jim, what's it going, like, how's it going? They have no problems.
Can we move over there, please?
Right. Like, we should not have any problems. We should not have to be running down to reset the modem. We should not be having problems, so it's, we're looking at it.
Do we have any other questions, colleagues?
I don't have any.
The IT committee, I don't know if I said that, the IT committee does recommend sticking with Terminal and having more of an engaged relationship with them.
And thank you for involving them in this.
Absolutely.
And, you know, convening them and that, you know.
And they, they've actually requested to meet, that's right. They've, uh, requested to meet with Brian, and he's going to be coming down. And I think that will, will be great for him to have a dialogue with, with those folks and get us where we want to be.
You said one lot, you mentioned before, you said this building and Old Town Hall. Would it, would they also service primetime as well?
I don't really know how we're connected with primetime right now. I don't think it's a VPN. They're on our list, they're supported, but they have a couple of problems that we don't really get over here, and I think it's because of, of the network and how... So he is well aware of my vision of everybody's connected, police and fire on their own, and he's gotta, he's gonna help us get to where that is. And a simple VP, it's called a VPN connection, is what we have with Old Town.
Virtual private network.
Network. We have that with Old Town Hall. And it will just be adding that one on there.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm accepting motions.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid to Terminal Services for our network, network services for the town.
In the amount, no?
$18,900.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just wanted to thank you. I know this was kind of a labor of love. We have been talking about this for quite a while. Um, and I just want to thank you for convening the IT committee, getting all the ducks in a row before this came to us, you know, for, for an official decision. So I appreciate that very much, and it's been a long time coming.
Yes.
Okay. Everyone in this building and elsewhere will agree. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Give me just a moment. I like to run out of here public after.
Mrs. Brady, do you mind filling the others in?
Thank you. Get a basket. Okay. Public, we are moving on to a request by the town treasurer and town clerk to declare surplus inventory. Again, the, these documents are part of the packet that we upload to the Agenda and Minutes section of the Board of Selectmen's webpage. I will just say, it involves three old HP computers, one Dell computer, one monitor, three adding machines, is that fancy for calculator? And two keyboards. Oh, it is really? Okay, I was just joking.
Abacus, is that what those are?
They have tape.
Oh, it's one of those. And then it prints it out. Okay, it's like a receipt. Okay, I am entertaining motions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request of, uh, the treasurer-collector and the town clerk and declare as surplus property the items that you just read.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We need to get the word out to departments that this equipment is available, because when it, I found it in the copy room and said, where is this going? At least one person said I could use an add-in machine. My calculator's junky, and I could, I said, well, there are three in the box. But that's when I got Mary and Sue and said, you just can't leave this here to get rid of it, so...
I'd also, that's a really good point. I'd also like to add, if you, I know you never have spare time, but if you have a spare moment, can you look at the three old HP computers and the Dell computer and see if any of them could potentially be a computer we could, um, not refurbish?
I know what you mean, clean.
For our town computer.
Our town office.
So maybe we don't have to buy, um, one.
Yes, I actually have a plan for that already. I, I thought that they were gonna make sure nobody else needed anything before this came here. Did that not happen? No?
Well, as I said, I walked in the copy room one day, and there was a box of stuff that looked, was piled up on the recycling bin. And I looked in it, and Mr. Ferry came in, because he took a wireless mouse.
Yeah, I took the little wrist pad thing.
And, um, that's when I asked Sue, what is this? And they said, oh, that shouldn't be there. So they generated this list.
So I'll just verify.
Thank you. I have one other point, and it's a little bit off topic, but if you'd indulge me. Do we need, so I know that our administrative assistant needs slash deserves some sort of new computer or iPad, whatever it's gonna be. Do we need, should we get that on the agenda as soon as possible, maybe for the next meeting?
To order one?
Yeah. Or do we not need to?
We don't need, if it's in the budget, which it would be, we can do that.
We don't need to act on it.
Perfect. Can we?
Yes.
Can we remember that?
That's so strange. I was actually just, was it today I was talking to you about that? Yeah. Because I actually, if she stops using the iPad, I want the iPad to be able to do an electronic packet, because I've got a lot of paper, and it's making me feel bad about the environment, so...
I understand. I understand.
So, yes, that's very much on our minds, so...
Perfect. Thank you.
If Mrs. Brady is interested, we can act on that.
Do you want to keep your old computer? No, just... All right. I'll let you guys, you ladies, deal with that.
Okay.
So we have a request by the Dighton Cultural Council to appoint...
Wait a minute, we got a motion on the table.
You're right. We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion?
So I'm holding on to this until I verify that, and then it will go to Finance Committee for their vote.
Of course.
Okay.
The only thing I would ask is when you look at any computer equipment, if the decision is made, it's going to be scrapped. We gotta make sure it's clean.
Following public records guidelines.
Everything needs to be backed up first, like, we can't just dispose. Everything gets backed up, and then it gets scrubbed once we're verified that it's backed up.
Okay.
And then, um, it, it will be a new machine.
And I just want to say, on the keyboards, I would like to get a keyboard for my new computer, because the touch system on laptops is terrible. So if it ends up surplus, I'm willing to buy one for, I know it's just surplus, but I, it's something I would like to have to keep personally.
Okay.
So, and they both got different connections, so I would have to figure out which one will actually fit the computer, yeah.
Yeah, test that out before you go buying one.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the surplus inventory? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Next, and thank you, Madam Administrator, again. Next, we have a request by the Dighton Cultural Council to appoint Brett Wilson as a member.
She comes unanimously recommended.
From them. Yeah, I got the email on that. That's fantastic.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Brett Wilson as a member of the Dighton Cultural Council.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Thank you, Brett. Brett. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. And I would be remiss if I didn't state that this is yet another resident who has joined a committee who is new. So we are bringing new people, um, into the fray here, and we really appreciate it. So if anybody else is interested in serving your town, uh, we do send out an email list with all the vacancies, and it is also on our website as well.
Oh, this is, this is Brett Steinstrom, Wilson.
Wilson, yep.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, she's a, uh, she's a good candidate, that's for sure.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And thank you again. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Jonathan Gale, who has applied to be, uh, on the 40B Committee. And Mr. Gale is also our American, Americans with Disabilities Act slash EEO for our town as well. So, um, we appreciate your service, Mr. Gale.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jonathan Gale to the 40B Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Are we gonna send this to the ZBA as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Selectman Pacheco.
The ZBA's process is a little different. They're gonna, they'll interview him. But I did have an opportunity to talk to Jonathan Gale. He's gonna be a great asset to this, uh, committee, and I'm looking forward to working with him.
You got good feeling.
We're gonna have a meet, uh, meeting next, uh, on September 19th at 5 o'clock. We're gonna have a meet, a meeting next on September 19th at 5:00. He already's made aware that if he's appointed, he'll be at that meeting. So I'm looking forward to working with him.
Good work.
At the department head meeting, he told us some of the things he wants to do as far as bringing the town into ADA compliance. So he's really active on that site.
I think actually today, they went to the CAD training. I think it was today or coming up. So that's a, a very good thing to go to, get some networking going on, and I'm very hopeful he can bring in some grants. Not hopeful, I know he will.
Absolutely.
I know he will.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next on the agenda, we're gonna skip aye, since we already acted on that, is to ratify an executive order for Bike to Beach. And this was an event that happened, just so everybody is aware, on Saturday, September 1st, 2018. But because we did not have a meeting until the 12th of September, I did have to sign this executive order, so that's why we're here tonight to ratify it. Madam Administrator?
So we did get that on, like, the Monday of the week of the event. The police department did approve it and signed off, and then you, of course, issued the executive order. So we're here just to ratify that.
I thought we did do that. Or did you just tell us about it?
I just told you about it.
She probably just told you about it.
I just told you, just so you knew that we were doing it.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the, that we ratify the executive order giving permission for the bike to the beach for autism cycling event.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. We're really firing on all cylinders tonight. Next is item 8K, one-day liquor license for Bristol County Agricultural High School Educational Fundraising Event and Request to Waive the Fees Associated with That. And this did come from Ms. Robin Van Rotz, the Director of Community Outreach. I think it's a good cause. I am in support.
Also, they're a nonprofit, which is in.
Right. I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license for Bristol County Agricultural High School Educational Fundraising Event and request that the fee be waived.
Second?
We have a motion and a second discussion.
No, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm gonna withdraw the second because I actually sit on the advisory board.
I understand.
So I, I support it, but I shouldn't make the second.
Okay. I will step down in second. Good call. Further discussion? I guess my one question, do you know if this is, and maybe it doesn't matter, is this specifically for all alcohol or for beer and wine?
So nonprofits are allowed to do beer and wine or liquor.
Sure.
As long as they buy from a approved or licensed by the ABCC distributor. So I believe.
It doesn't really matter.
They didn't circle it.
I was just curious.
They didn't circle it.
I'm like, is this an event I need to go to? What's, what are they serving?
They had this last year. Last year was the first event to raise money for their foundation. I remember getting invited. Something else came up, I couldn't go.
Did they serve you beer or martini?
I didn't go.
Well, so nonprofits are allowed to do the all alcohol.
Uh huh.
So.
It doesn't matter.
It would just be, right.
Serve whatever you want. I'll be there. All right. Any, any, anything else before we make motions?
Nope.
All right. I will entertain motion. Wait.
We got the motion in a second. We just need to vote.
Let's just vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
We're too focused on the event.
I'm gonna be there. Okay. Next tonight is Last of the New Business, a one-day liquor license for the Dayton Lions Club Annual Arts Festival and a request to waive the fee.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion and to waive, for the permit and to waive the fee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Just wanted to thank the Lions for all that they do for the town. And hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
This, this one is beer and wine.
Oh, okay. Good to know. All right. Pinot Grigio. Okay. Next, we have correspondence.
Huh? Westport Rivers.
Oh, I have some of their wine at my house.
That's why I'm trying to get out of here. Okay, correspondence.
Davey, sorry.
I do, it was so good. Correspondence. We do have a piece of correspondence from Jonathan Gray, who also sits on our Green Communities Grant Committee regarding the formation of a Dayton Trails Committee. And I'm, I'm, I don't, do you want me to read this?
Nope. I can.
Thank you.
I can summarize for you. So Jonathan Gray and Chris Chandonay actually came and we sat down and talked about this committee that originally was kind of like a bike path committee, which I think would be a great addition to the town of Dayton. And then he said, well, Jonathan Gray was like, well, let's not limit it. Let's do trails and segregated. Yeah. So he's here requesting, or not here, his email's here, requesting the establishment of a Dayton Trails Committee that would sort of be a segment off of the Taunton Pathways Committee, what they're doing. Their, their bike path is coming right up to Riverside Ave, very close.
Railroad.
Railroad Ave, thank you. And the thought is that we could connect to them, but if we don't go right up to them, we can get some regional funding to do the connection and get a little bit for free. So I know how horrible that sounds, but saved us some money. So they have a couple, they, we were spinning some ideas about where to put the bike path. Nicole Skylson, actually in the ZBA, has been working on this open space sort of thing. So I did invite her to that meeting, and she had kind of a vision of where we would put it and where some, we would come up with some state neighbors. They would be, the state would be the neighbor and working in Sweets Knoll. So there's a lot of ideas here, and we need a committee to steer that.
Correct.
And I have Jason Quinn, Jessica Daly, and Chris Chandonay as three individuals interested in serving on that committee.
Okay.
So we do have some interest.
So I guess before we act on this tonight, which, again, I support this. I know I've spoken to John, Jonathan, over the years about this, so I'm glad to see him finally kind of, you know, not forcing the issue, but really an impassioned plea for us to do this. My question would be, before we vote, how many members do we envision being on this? Five? Three? Like?
Oh, so I like.
Because there's gonna be some work that'll have to do. This isn't gonna be like just taking votes.
So I like five to seven.
Okay.
I am partial to five because if you think mentally you don't have a lot of people, everyone jumps in and does an equal share of the work. But if you think that you have a lot of people, you're like, oh, so-and-so can do it.
The same three or four.
Right. So I like five. It's also easier for a quorum. Need three people instead of four, it's just easier. And I also asked if Jonathan Gray would be this, because he serves on the Taunton Pathways Committee, this liaison to our committee to help open up funding opportunities. He said that Taunton Pathways would support Dayton, help find those grant opportunities and funnel them over here and just make us aware. So starting this committee would be, they would be working in conjunction with Taunton Pathways Committee and maybe eventually, you know, years down the road, linking up with the East Bay Bike Path in Rhode Island, which I think would be really, really special.
He told me about that, absolutely.
So that's really cool. And Chris Chandonay goes on all these other bike paths, and I just thought it would be such a good perspective from him because he can see what others have. We talked about people who would wanna buy benches in memoriam of maybe a loved one that has passed away, bricks. I love bricks. I always buy a brick, and my kids get a big kick out of it. So sign me up for a brick. But things like that to help fundraise to actually make that happen. And then there's also AmeriCorps and all sorts of groups that come down and build these types of things. So there's a lot of work for the Trails Committee to do, and we need them to be appointed.
I like this idea. First of all, I like the idea because building trails, I mean, that's, you know, that's very family-friendly. It keeps people active, so the, you know, there really are no downsides. And I al, I really like this idea too, because I foresee us working really closely with Taunton on this. So now we're building bridges of communication to our nearby town and what I'm also thinking, nearby city. What I'm also thinking is being affiliated with a big city on a, a potential project like this might mean we have a better likelihood of getting some sort of monies to bring this to fruition.
And not just any city, but a gateway city.
Gateway for what?
That gives you extra, they're designated as a gateway city, so you get extra points on a lot of grant applications.
Oh, okay. Why are we not a gateway city?
We're not a city.
Oh, that's true. Well, that makes sense.
We might be more successful.
Gateway community.
We might be more successful than this, than if we were on South Coast Rail.
I hope. We, I feel like we lost that battle. South Coast Rail, for anybody who was wondering.
So I would just form the committee tonight and not naming?
I think we should wait, because we don't have, if we do five or seven, yeah. We don't have enough.
Okay.
And they fill out the volunteer forms. I literally asked Jessica Daly today, though, if she would do it.
Were you arm twisting?
No, she said sure, because she was talking about things, and I said, you know, you'd be great. We're about to form this Trails Committee. Do you wanna do it? And she said yes.
She has wanted to be more involved.
And I like that she could be like a open space representative, because she's on the open space committee.
Absolutely.
She's also on the land use committee.
I love it.
So.
Continuity.
I'm laughing because Chris Chandonay, we got him to.
We did.
Volunteer for the cemetery commission.
Yes.
And then something else came along, and we got him for that.
Right. So I asked him if he would be on it, and he said, well, I would just like to be like a helper. He just wanted to like be, you know, just interested. And I said, oh, like a, like a groupie. He said, yeah. I said, okay. So then Jason Quinn said he would do it if Chris did it, and so now we've got them both on.
Now we got them both on. Perfect. We got the green light?
Yeah.
All right. I agree.
That's right.
I like that.
The roads are too busy with trails. That's exactly what Jessica said, too. Someplace for them to.
Chris can't blame us for this one.
Thank you very much.
So I absolutely thank you.
I'll make a motion to town, form a Dayton Trails Committee, compose the five members.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion passes. And thank you to everyone, especially you, Mr. Gray, for really not holding our feet to the fire, but being very insistent about this. That's how you get things done, especially in government. So we do appreciate that, and we look forward to seeing what you guys accomplish together. All right. We do have some announcements. An affordable housing lottery is in progress for six three-bedroom homes located in Dayton Woods. Applicants must meet income and asset limits, which are outlined on this form, which is available at Town Hall. There is an informational meeting on September 13th at 6:30 PM, that is tomorrow, at the Dayton Public Library. Applications are available at Dayton Town Hall, the Dayton Public Library, and online at dytonwoodslottery.com. Or you can request one by calling 781-329-8201. And I'm going to allow my colleague to do the remaining announcements, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Miss, can I just comment?
Sure.
Anyone who's interested in applying for one of these homes, please keep in mind that the $10,000, up to $10,000 is available to first-time home buyers to assist you with buying a home and closing costs. So that's that Attleboro Taunton Housing Consortium that I'm always talking about, and we do have information here. So there's $10,000 that could help you.
That is a very good point. Thank you for that. I'm taking notes, so I think you're right.
You can apply for it.
No. I wish.
So I have a couple of announcements for the Dayton Historical Society. I want people to understand that I'm a member of the Dayton Historical Society. All the members are volunteers, and we don't get paid. We're having a psychic fair on Saturday, September 22nd, from 9:00 to 5:00 PM at the Taunton Yacht Club, located at 2125 Water Street in Dayton. And we're also having a Native American Nature Tales by Diane Etcome, Sunday, September 23rd at 2:00 PM at the Friendship Hall at the Dayton Community Church, 2056 Elm Street in Dayton, Mass. The community events has been, some community events are being hosted by the Friends of the Dayton Public Library. They're having a Taste of Dayton. I hope everybody comes to this. This coming Monday, September 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Dayton Pavilion behind Town Hall. For more information, contact the library at 508-669-6421. This is either the third or the fourth time they've done this. They're also having Create Your Family Legacy, Organizing Your Materials, Thursday, September 20th, 6:30 PM at the Dayton Public Library. And they're also gonna have a Create Your Family Legacy Storytelling, Thursday, September 27th at 6:30 PM at the Dayton Public Library. The 40B Committee is looking for a one-at-large, one-at-large member. We just had Jonathan Gale added to it, and we're now seeking one additional member. I'm the Board of Selectmen's liaison person for the 40B Committee. Primetime is looking for adults in need of daytime activities. Reminis, reminisce with Myrna. Returns to Lakin Village Community Center on Friday, September 21st. Should be there from 10:15 to 11:45. Everyone is welcome.
I did wanna add two community events. One, I believe, is the Dayton Community Church is having a craft fair. You've probably seen the orange signs throughout town on October 13th. You can look at the website for the times and what will be offered. And also a yard sale for the Dayton Community Church on October 20th. Again, hours online.
Isn't the Dayton Lions Club also having another championship festival?
In Rehoboth on September 16th.
How did I not hear about this?
Now, you also gonna be a judge of that one, do you?
I was not invited to be the judge, but I loved being the judge, so sign me up. I did buy a ticket, so here's hoping.
And it's gonna be a Colonial Day behind Town Hall on September 15th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. The Rehoboth minimum will be present, and we doing demonstrations of different things that they would have done in the 18th century.
All right. Thank you, Selectmen Pacheco. And at this time, we'll move on to Selectmen's reports. Selectmen Goulart, the floor is yours.
Okay. MMA started up today, so just a brief report. We discussed some of the legislation we filed last year that didn't make it all the way through, and some's gonna be refiled that relate to assist municipal and district rate pay, rate payers. And this is, this is for, in the impact of proposed environmental rules and regulations, which all relates to stormwater and all that good stuff. Another one, Sustainable Water Resources Funds. We're gonna refile that one. And this one also includes stormwater in that we're trying to see if we can get approval for wastewater utility fees, which include stormwater. And then there's more legislation that's brand-new that we're talking about that deals with net metering on solar farms. We had a presentation from the Central Mass Stormwater Committee and what they're doing with the grant money they got from the state, trying to create a statewide program, and it's called Think Blue Massachusetts, which is patented after Think Blue Maine, so anyhow. And there was an update on recycling, which I mentioned when Mr. Ferry was here. What I asked to speak about tonight was, there was an article in the Taunton Gazette on September 3rd, on the front page. Email Spat spat between Dayton, Rehoboth, Selectmen. This relates to the vote that the board, this board took on September 20th. No. Our meeting was September.
Probably the 12th or something.
August, August 27th. And at the meeting, what we said was that we were not going to hold an individual, this board was not going to meet individually with, separately with the Board of Rehoboth to discuss the regional agreement that they have drafted and that we asked to have a meeting, a public meeting at the next, well, now will be the next Dayton-Rehoboth meeting on September the 25th. So, that invited to it would be both Boards of Selectmen, both finance committees. Obviously, the school committee would be there. So, that we could review the agreement that the regional school district, the elected officials, school committee, have put together. The spat part has nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen's meeting that we had. The reporter, and I realize they write to sell papers, somehow accessed information that was on Facebook postings made by Dr. Z. And concluded evidently from that and from comments made by members of the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen that the posting created, and I'll quote, "varying degrees of angst." And this whole spat thing, again, I don't know what the spat is. This board took...
That's their word. That's the reporter's word. That's not my word.
Exactly, to sell papers. That...
No offense, Jordan. We love you.
But, the fact of the matter is, I think this article has blown the situation out of proportion. I think it's created a problem, or angst, to use the word that was cited, between the towns. And my concern is that, first of all, we're still partners with the town of Rehoboth and the regional school district. One of the things that was pointed out at the DI graduation this past June, all of the speakers, the student speakers, the adults that spoke, talked about, "We are one school. We are, we are one group." My concern is that articles like this could mislead or make, the effect on the children would be to make them feel like, "We've got to take sides. And this is not what we're about. That's not what a regional school district is about." We are one school district. We are partners with Rehoboth. And yes, from time to time, we will have disagreements. Again, I think that if the reporter had not accessed, or the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen had not accessed information that was on Facebook, I don't think we'd have seen this article. Certainly, Dr. Z has a right to express an opinion, however, publicly, Facebook, you name it. I would only request that because of what's happened this time, that if any member of the board goes to a public medium and makes a statement, they preface it with, "This is not, I am, this is not an official comment, message from the town of Dayton Board of Selectmen," similar to what I put when I write up meetings for reading.
That's valid.
Again, I think, I immediately thought of the DI graduation. And I thought, "This kind of thing should not create a rift in our schools. We, our kids are not in competition. They are part of the regional school district." If anyone would have had a rift, it would have been the class of '61. Because when we came together for the first time our senior year, we had to be united as the pioneer class. We didn't know any of the Rehoboth kids. And the Berkeley-Dighton kids were together because we went to school next door. Yet, for that senior year, we were the senior class of '61. And we're able to pull it off and have had succeeding get-togethers, the last one being our, two years ago. But anyhow, that's what I wanted to address.
Absolutely. You don't mind if I?
No. And I personally, the other thing too is, this is the same night, the night we voted not to meet separately with the Board of Selectmen without the school committee being present, is the same night that we voted to send them a congratulatory certificate on the celebration of their anniversary. And I'm looking at this saying, it was positive. It was not, whatever. So, anyhow, we do plan to meet with the school committee. And the Selectmen have been invited. It's a public meeting. Anybody wants to come? And, and I'm willing to work with anybody. That agreement needs work. We need to come up with a revised agreement. And we need to get this thing settled. But, these kind of articles don't help.
Agreed. What I would say, so the, the actual timeline, for anybody who's interested in it, was the Rehoboth Selectmen contributed to an article in Rehoboth Now. My Facebook post was in response to the article they had written after their meeting, in response to the email they received. There wouldn't have been a Facebook post if they didn't pretend, like my email that I read to you both, which nobody had any issue with, was a slap in the face. Because we had already told them twice, that was the third time we were rejecting the offer. So, it wasn't, they weren't actually upset. They had already known two or three times prior that that wasn't going to happen. So, that was just a, it was an article that was written, personal opinion, everybody, to make it seem as if we were the mean old Dayton Board of Selectmen, which I know we're not. What I told the reporter, which clearly wasn't juicy and didn't make it into the article, correct, was, "I had no problem with Rehoboth drafting their own regional agreement. I had no problem with them having and advocating for what they think is best for Rehoboth. But, guess what? You have to show up at the meeting if you want your ideas to be implemented into the final product, which is a amended regional agreement that's palatable to both Dayton and Rehoboth." But, of course, that didn't make it into the article, and that's fine. Jordan, I, we need you there. So, keep your job. But, I have no problem. I can work with anybody. It doesn't mean I'm going to agree with 100% of what they want. I will also add that I think a lot of angst has been created in the town of Dayton when we hear the same officials in Rehoboth saying, "We subsidize Dayton schools. We subsidize Dayton schools." That personally is what I feel is pitting or making people feel like they have to choose sides. So, what I'm going to request everybody do, myself included and the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen members, is let's stop talking about it before the 25th. Let's all review the documents, go in with a willingness to listen to one another's position with an understanding that we're both going to advocate for what we feel is best for both of our towns. And I feel like that's how we should approach this. But, I will also state that if people, if elected officials are going to publicly declare what I believe to be inaccuracies about the town of Rehoboth subsidizing Dayton, I'm pretty sure we just raised and appropriated and took from free cash money, we would have happily let you pay for our modular units, Rehoboth, if you could have agreed on that. But, that was a joke. I think we should...
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, yeah. No, if you really want to pay. But, we'd just be happy they pay their bills. So, at this point, I'm going in with an open meeting, open mind. And I hope that I see the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen sitting on the other end of the table. Ms. Selectmen Pacheco.
Sure. I just think that the public needs to know that you've done a lot of work already on this, that you've met many times with the school committee.
Yep.
Unlike Nancy and I, we haven't been sitting down with them. So, I understand...
Well, they, they had their own meeting with this. So, they weren't, they chose not to be at that table that night.
But, you were very involved with it. And I understand your frustration with the Board of Selectmen in Rehoboth. You know, this is social media. We sometimes have to be careful what we put out there. I try not to respond to this kind of stuff. But, I did when you, I saw the comments that you made. I felt that you weren't speaking for the board. You were speaking for yourself.
I was. I was.
And that's how I interpreted that. So...
And when I referenced the "we" in this article, it was about the vote that "we" unanimously took. It wasn't, you know, "We served for two years. I would never speak for you. You've never spoken for me. We are going to give you the same courtesy." So, I will say, if my comments made you feel like I put you in a difficult position, or it's an us versus them, it's not. My point was, Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, you're all adults. If you choose to come to the meeting, you will. If you don't, you don't. It has nothing to do with anything I'm saying. You're either going to come or you're not. I hope you're there. I hope you come with an open mind like we will. Again, you're going to advocate for what you think is best for the town. That's, I would never begrudge you that. But, I do hope to see you at the other end of the table. And yeah, that's all I have to say about that.
And I think that night we voted during the discussion, we, we all agreed, we want the existing agreement, the Rehoboth draft and the DI draft, so we could compare notes. Because as, as Mr. Pacheco said, you've done a lot of work on this. I've been away from this for a long time.
No, not, not work. I just, I read the document and showed up to the meeting and gave my opinion.
Exactly. You were at meetings. But, I mean, certainly, the regional agreement is not fresh in my mind. So, being able to have those three documents and say, "Oh, well, that's similar. Well, that's different." I mean, that's how we went about this. And I really think that had that article not appeared, had been written the way it was written, if it had been written factually as far as what our intent really was, then it wouldn't have sold papers. And we wouldn't have had this to do. But, I'm with you. I'm willing to sit down with...
Absolutely.
The Selectmen, the finance committee, the school, whoever wants to talk about this. So, we can work on this and get it done.
I think what offended them, I'm going to nip this in the bud, but I do want to, because you just made me think of something. I think the part that offended them was they felt like their draft wasn't going to be discussed. I may have been inarticulate when I said that. What I meant was, I don't intend on going through their draft line by line. But, of course, if you're sitting across the table, you can say, "For this section, we, we think this is best." And that, of course, we would never begrudge anybody. The point of, the point of negotiations in my mind is that you know you're going to go in and you're not going to get 100% of what you want. And you're going to have to give a little to get a little. And I will always, and I'll say this to you, Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, no matter what happens, whether we agree on a regional agreement or not, we're all going to leave with our dignity. We're all going to leave with the intention of doing what's best for the kids. So, that's all I have to say. But, does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? Karen stopped typing, so we've got to move on.
She's thinking of that new computer she's getting.
She's selecting models now. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have acknowledgements. And it is an acknowledgement of an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of $25.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation to Primetime for $25.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make one announcement?
Sure.
Because it's going to happen before we meet again. Excuse me. Sojourn Bears is starting up again. It's going to be Monday, the 24th of September at 10:30 at Lincoln Village. So, if anyone has a little bit of time, we, we work from 10:30 to noon. And making Sojourn Bears, we've got all the material. We've got plenty of everything we need to do it. So, we took summer off, but we'll be working again. Everyone's welcome.
What was the date?
The 24th of September, Monday at 10:30. And it ends at noon time.
Thank you. And if we could just make sure we have that announcement for our next, on our next agenda. Next, we have some meeting minutes. We have four sets that are ready to be approved and one new set that we need separately to accept for review.
So, am I, since I wasn't a member of the Board of Selectmen for the May 16th and May 30th meeting, am I able to vote on this? Or, do I just sit back on this?
I would say it's improper for you to vote.
Ooh, improper. Okay.
Sorry.
You don't want to be improper.
You're throwing the etiquette book at you.
Yeah, I would have used another word, but improper.
You would be out of order.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the Selectmen's regular meeting on May 16th and the minutes of the regular meeting on May 30th be approved.
I'm going to step down and second that motion. Discussion. You can at least comment if you'd like.
I was president for those meetings, but I'm okay with it. I don't want to be improper.
It's an indictment. Okay.
My job to keep you on track. That's all.
Exactly. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for Selectmen's regular meetings of August 1st and August 8th of 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. One clarification. I believe the August 1st meeting was a special meeting, one of those, but I know it doesn't matter.
Right. Yes.
So, that's fine. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And the last set.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept review the minutes of the select, regular Selectmen's meeting on August 22nd.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of the warrants, Selectmen Gulart.
I'm going to share the wealth with Mr. Pacheco. If you do the August ones, I'll do the September ones.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants. Warrant number 9A-19 in the amount of $87,440.81. B warrant number 9B-19 in the amount of $23,839.99. C warrant number 9C-19 in the amount of $45,031.31. And warrant D warrant number 9D-19 in the amount of $204,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 10A-19 in the amount of $91,137.47 payroll. Warrant 10B-19 in the amount of $764,116.52. Most of that is for the police station contract. Warrant 10C in 9, -19 in the amount of $22, the last two being accounts payable be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 11A-19 in the amount of $102,640.95 payroll. 11B-19 in the amount of $160,837.98. And warrant 11C-19 in the amount of $22, the last two being accounts payable be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And the motion passes. Any public input? Okay. So, we have no public input. As chairman, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may be detriment, have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares, I do declare, and the Board of Selectmen will not be returning to open session.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And the motion passes. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 All right. Cable, public, thank you so much. And everybody, have a great night.
I'm going to grab my file in case I miss you. I like that you waved.
I copied them. I'm like, "Hey, that's a good idea."
I got to make a bathroom run.
I was just thinking that.
I'm going to declare a recess.
Recession. Nobody's even listening.
Hey, Mr. McKean only plays them for 30 seconds. You've got 30 seconds. He did that to me a couple of times. You're supposed to make motions. And I spent 30 seconds staring at him, saying, "What?" And he says, "You're running out of time."